Well, as always, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the flag of which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible liberty and justice for all. Recognitions.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out. We're excited this evening to recognize one of our superstar employees, Tara Harrison, here from Central School. She is an art teacher. Tara, I'm gonna embarrass you and make you stand up in front of everybody. Welcome Tara. And with Tara is our Principal of Central School, Beth Hennessy. So Tara has, it was back in the fall, was honored with a really prestigious arts award, and we wanted to recognize that this evening. So with that, I'm gonna kick it to Sue, who is gonna give us some more detail about it. But if you've ever been in Tara's classroom, it is an incredible environment where everybody is engaged in what the activities are, and it's a really neat and safe place to be. So Sue?
No, it's great. One person who isn't here this evening because she had a schedule conflict is Shannon Gagné. And Shannon is our K-12 department supervisor. Tara, if there was a fan club about you, she would be the founding member, for sure. Oh, and you're second, you're co-pres, you're co-pres, Principal Hennessy. But Shannon was the one that nominated Tara for the Connecticut Art Association Educator of the Year Award. And so it's no surprise that she was the recipient. So Matt spoke with us about her ability just to connect with kids. There is a content expertise about Tara that is really unique and rare. So she is very well-versed in textiles and dyes, and has recently received a fund for teachers where she could really develop that skillset in an authentic way with art experts. So she's done that. She's brought that learning back to the art department. She shared that with her students. But more importantly, she creates a classroom where all students are known and belong, and find a place, and can contribute. So one of the other aspects about Tara is she is incredibly humble. And what she will not tell you, so I will, is that all of that coming together, her content skillset, her ability just to connect with kids, has resulted in multi-grades of student work being part of a current exhibit at the Metropolitan Museum of Modern Art right now, as a part of a greater exhibit. So I will send the board the connection, so you can see that. But that is all because of what she does. So it is no surprise that she is the Connecticut Art Association Educator of the Year. And we just thank you for all that you do for lifting the level of excellence among staff members, but most importantly, with our students. So, thank you.
Congratulations. It's great. On to public audience. Great, okay. Committee reports and communications. Rocka.
Hi. So recently from the high school, the Anastasia musical just finished. If you saw that, I heard it was very good. Also, the high school is a finalist for Battle of the Fans for Outstanding School Spirit. And on that note, we also have a spirit rally coming up on the 27th. A lot of the other schools are currently having information nights as we move into the next year. For example, Latimer Lane has kindergarten information night coming up for people entering the school system. Similarly, so does Henry James. They're having their open house for, they just had their open house for six great families last week on the 4th. And we are also seeing a circuit of concerts wrapping up for elementary schools. For Henry James, it's already finished, and it's finishing for Squadron Line. And I would just like to say that for Squadron Line, there was two students that were selected for Elementary Arts Recog- the Elementary Arts Recognition Festival, which is like a state-level award. So I found that was impressive.
Thank you.
I have nothing, thank you.
Right. I have nothing for you. Chair?
Happy Black History Month. And other than that?
Great. Jen?
I didn't know if you wanted me to talk about it, or you wanted to talk about the meeting we went to last night?
Please do. You've got the floor.
I did go to, Jeff and I are part of the SHS Trojan Committee Council. And so we went last night, last night was the second meeting. And one of the things that I think is so fascinating, what they're trying to do is, it appears that Simsbury High School, we all know is really great at, you know, for kids that are looking for that four-year college direction and where to go next. But for kids that maybe aren't interested in that path and wanna take a different path, or whether that's trades or certifications or whatever, it's just improving and creating maybe a website that will offer all kids different paths that they can look at based on whatever topic or industry they're looking into. And so it was really fascinating last night. There was a man that came from, economist from the Department of
Labor.
Labor, and talked about just stats about Connecticut, and websites, and it was really interesting stuff. And so more to come on that, but I thought it was productive and really interesting.
Absolutely.
Just wanna share a couple of things, that this Friday is an early release day for professional development. As a reminder to our families, so incredible building-based work done across all seven schools. So we're excited about that. Also, just wanted to let the board know that over April vacation, we are going to have five international trips happening. Places that include the following: Costa Rica, Italy, Portugal, Fran- France, and Taiwan. So they've all gone through a really developed process to make sure that all of the safety nets are in place, but great, incredible experiences for our students.
Absolutely. Yep.
Nothing for me tonight. I just wanna say, or let everybody know that we, I wanted to express my appreciation to the fellow board members. On Saturday, we spent a good portion of the day on our budget workshop, you know, just taking that portion of your weekend to spend and rolling up our sleeves with the numbers. It's, again, greatly appreciated. I thought we made a lot of progress. We'll just keep going tonight, obviously, but just wanna obviously express my appreciation to all of you.
Matt?
I would just say I had a chance to attend Sunday's performance of Anastasia. It was really great. And it's just, it's inspiring to see those kids just in their jam. I mean, they, you know, are so enjoying what they're doing. The performance was excellent. It was well-attended. And I always, on an annual basis, really enjoy seeing that talent just come out in the community turnout as well. So, really great.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Okay. First up, we have the approval of the minutes of the January 28th meeting. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for January 28th. Great. Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Personnel?
Two items for action by the board tonight. The first is a retirement that will happen at the end of this year. You may recognize this item. It came forward earlier in the fall when Sharon Gagan, our Family and Consumer Science teacher, announced that she was gonna do the retirement three years from now. Sharon has done 23 years at Simsbury and over 15 in New York State before she came here. So she's actually taught for over 40 years, and has decided she has nothing left to prove. So she's not gonna do the full three years that she said she was. And she will be retiring as of June 30th of this year. So congratulations to Sharon, and the motion is there for your action.
I move that the Board of Education accept the notice and retirement of Sharon
Gagan.
Gagan. Gagan, effective June 30th, 2025.
Any discussion?
Thank you. Oh, second?
Any discussion?
Enjoy your retirement. Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And one other, an announcement of a retirement that would happen a year from this June. And that is Bruce Corbett, math teacher at Simsbury High School. Bruce has been, started at Henry James as a math teacher before moving to Simsbury High School for about the past 20 years. Has also coached in the school system, raised his kids in the school system. So Bruce is announcing his retirement effective June 30th of 2026. The motion is there for your action.
Move that the Board of Education accept the notice of retirement of Bruce Corbett, effective June 30th, 2026.
Second?
Any discussion?
Thank you to him.
Hopefully he sticks around and does the game clock at all the basketball. Scoreboard, the scoreboard.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the approval of the gift from our good friends at Ensign Bickford.
Yes.
Great. So in accordance with your policy, any gift that comes to the school system in excess of $1,500 requires your approval. And tonight, this has been an annual occurrence. Our partners at Ensign Bickford Aerospace and Defense Company, and their generous donation to our K-12 STEM education. So Sean is here, and he's brought a whole crew, so I'm gonna ask them all to come forward, if that's okay, after approval of this gift. But EBAD has been such an incredible partner, and not only is Sean here with some of his leaderships, we've had mentors work with our students from robotics, who are also here this evening. And there is an incredible gift of $12,500 to be placed towards STEM K-12 priorities here in Simsbury for your approval. And if you so approve that gift, we'll bring everyone up here for some pictures and some thanks.
This has just been an amazing growing partnership. We just greatly appreciate it. The STEM program at Simsbury has just grown by leaps and bounds thanks to your development and your contributions and your commitment to it. So just on behalf of the board, and I don't, you guys jump in, please, just wanted to say thank you for everything that you all are doing.
Yes, well, thank you for this opportunity as well.
I'm sorry, just let me, I'll just read the, move that the proposed gift of $12,500 to STEM K-12 from the Ensign, Ensign, I can't speak today, Bickford Aerospace and Defense Company be accepted.
Second? A second? Any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity. I mean, if you know Ensign Bickford's history, it's been here, and the town's grown up around, around Ensign Bickford, and Simsbury has grown up. So it's a tradition of giving, you know, that EBAD wants to continue. It's been a successful partnership. They've planned to continue for many years. We see the school system growing as well, which is great. Also wanted to thank Dr. Wendy Koo, example of the dedication and leadership in the area of science and technology at the high school. You know, this check's easy to write with educators like Wendy. You know, the easy part is handing over a check, and the hard part is really inspiring the students in the classroom. So appreciate her for doing that. Here with Megan and Austin, who are coworkers and residents in Simsbury that will have kids either in or soon to be in the school system. I have a son at Henry James and a daughter at Latimer right now. And then Elliot and Ishu and Matt are mentors for First Robotics. So just a great opportunity. We look to continue this, and thank you.
Great. Let's get some pictures.
Thank you.
This is my favorite presentation with the big check.
Wherever, wherever makes sense. So you can direct, whoever has the, we should probably, like I said, we can take a big group, and then you can take a, you can take a smaller one with First Robotics as well. Okay. Where, would you like us?
How about right there? That works.
Okay.
Although I do want to, can we, can we shift you down here a little bit, so the table's not in the way?
Why don't we even it up, two of us here, two blue, there we go.
And I'll squeeze in.
There you go.
Right in the middle, Megan.
All right, ready?
Yes.
We can say STEM. All right. And then this one, we'll say EBAD.
EBAD.
Yes. That's fantastic. And Dr. Koo, would you also introduce members of the robotics team that are here this evening?
Yeah, so we have two, we have Avi Cooperman, a senior, who is in Charge of Business Department. And we have Ben Lee, who's a junior, is also a captain. And he does everything.
Let's get a quick picture with the students in the midst.
What's the three-fourths?
Yes, that's one of our mentors, too.
That's their FRC team number.
Okay, we'll give you the check if you like.
So they've been around for a long time, because the numbers go up. Current teams joining now are in the 10,000s.
Where's the check?
You want it straight here, right here?
Okay, Wendy.
I'm just saying, it's a good visual.
It's a great visual. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, here we go. Cheers. That's a great one. Fantastic. Ben or Avi, do you want to say anything about the mentoring process? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I am.
So Elliot and Ishu and Matt, so our robotics go from five to eight. So after work, they come and visit and help us, like, learn how to do some stuff. Like Elliot and Ishu, I know has helped us do, like, computer-aided design. So we're actually able to design a robot, like, fairly quickly, instead of having to draw each component and measure it and think about it. So their help has, like, almost elevated our, like, complexity that we're able to achieve throughout our team. And hopefully, we'll be able to do even better than last year.
It's great.
It's great.
It's great. Yeah.
Thank you.
And your competition's coming up, isn't it?
Yeah, our first one is March 13th to 15th.
Fantastic. So definitely let us know how it goes.
Best of luck.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you for coming out. Thank you very much.
Really thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Dr. Koo, can we get some swag at some point? We have to.
I love the t-shirt. It just came out today.
I know where to find you.
And she's actually finalizing the storefront, um, if you can be able to fill it today. So we can share the link.
Yes, please do.
There you go.
As well as our second competitions at Hartford High School, the Enmark. So we would love for you guys to come and see us in action. Or we meet Monday through Friday, Friday to Saturday at the high school. You're always welcome to step by, roll up your sleeves.
Every day.
And they will be, on their break on Monday and Tuesday, they will be finishing this for a while.
Right.
That's so exciting. That's great.
Good luck! Thank you, Dr. Koo. Just such a great example of community partnership.
Okay, now, move on to the budgets, in continuation of our Saturday conversation.
Yeah.
Wanna kick it off?
I do. So you mentioned it before, I wanted to mention again that we're coming out of the budget workshop this past Saturday. It was taped, so that will be available for people if they wanna watch the entire thing. So it was about nine to one. So prizes for anybody that does, does make it through that. But I think a lot of good dialogue, a lot of good information, and kind of the agreement and the thought and the focus from the board coming out of that, coming into this meeting today, was to give board members an opportunity to both ask questions and kind of just speak to where they are with the data and the information we presented. So I thought what I would do to try to tie it all together and tee it up is I just have four quick slides to go over, at really a macro level, what we talked about. And then I'll turn it over to you to kind of facilitate the conversation.
Great.
So, started with the first slide, which is where we start every presentation, just how we frame our work in the continuous improvement process and the strategic planning of the board. And then we wanna align our resources with Board of Education goals. So the budget at the onset of the workshop that I presented represented a 4.37% increase over last year's operating cost, 3.7 million over last year's operating cost, and as you can see, a total of $89,560,117. So to break that entire presentation down to basically three lines, just as a refresher, we had a discussion of our fixed costs, rolled over from last year, which represent a 3.61% increase to the operating cost. We discussed possible reductions, which were inclusive of four full-time equivalent positions being reduced that were aligned with retirements. So you gain the full value of those reductions. And also the insurance line item, which has been favorable for two years, and kind of right-sizing that, and looking at some things, and obtaining close to 2% of a reduction off that fixed cost number. We then focused on two main areas of the budget. Operations, which was kind of a catch-all for other insurance line items, but really had a discussion about some of our maintenance items, some of our equipment items, that over the course of the past three to four years, that's where we've kind of nipped away at, and trying to be responsible with our budgeting and lower some numbers. And we need to kind of true some of those things up, just to keep pace with our facilities, to be honest with you, and make sure we're doing our due diligence there. And then special education, three areas of special education. Tuition for outplacement costs, an increase of about 10%. Same number of students, but an increase of 10%. We had a transportation line item in there, and then we had some contracted services. So an additional $890,000 there, that equates to the 4.37% increase. We then talked about if we had to move off that number and try to get that number under 4%, what would be some of the things we would think about? A bus purchase, which we have currently in the operating budget. We would work with the Board of Finance, and it seems like they're supportive of that, and some potential other CNR needs to buy that out of reserves. So we could still get that bus, but purchase it in a different resource and relieve our operating cost. We had textbooks in that line item, you'll recall, in, library books, I'm sorry, in that line item, you'll recall, in our budget workshop. We had some discussion about that. We did without the purchase of those last year. We looked to other areas. Sue is, in terms of the dollars she manages in those areas, we looked at the curriculum, kind of summer curriculum, and some different things we could do there. And she feels comfortable that she could take a smaller portion of that line item. We would have the library books back in, which I think would be a good thing, and still have a small reduction there. The food service director position, really kind of a technicality in how we would move dollars. We would take other line items that are eligible, that could be paid out of our food service account, and just wash the dollars out. So we would keep the food service director position in there, because that was the guidance of the state of where it had to be paid from. Pull other dollars out, there's some electricity, there's some, some equipment stuff that aligns with that program, and we could wash those dollars out and get a reduction. We said we'd look at that small portion of overtime, and then utilize some health reserve funds, about $100,000. So we could move the needle about $400,000, not really negatively impact our programming, which was the goal of what we were doing, and be at a 3.91% increase overall. So I just wanted to refresh you on the conversation we had coming out, where we align there. And then the last piece of the puzzle, not looking to complicate things at all, but just to discuss, we mentioned it briefly, that Simsbury is eligible this year for a significant increase in the educational cost share funding. So that is the grant offset that, on an annual basis, goes to the town. They've looked at that formula over time, and certain towns were underfunded. We were underfunded. Farmington was underfunded. So this is the first year that they really have a substantial bump in that. But it's interesting, in the summary of the governor's budget, there were some restrictions put, put out there on the dollars. We haven't seen the true development of this yet, but I wanna kind of share what is out there, that the funding needs to be used for direct supports to classroom instruction. Makes it seem like those dollars almost have to come to the Board of Ed, and not to town side. They gave some other areas there that are pretty inclusive of what you could utilize the dollars for. There's a stipulation that if you receive over $100,000, more than you did the year before, you need to submit a plan to the state. So there's gotta be an accountability measure of how those dollars would be allocated. What we don't know is whether this is, you know, when you think about grants, is this new dollars, is it supplementary dollars? It would really make no sense, and I'll kind of, I don't wanna take the air out of the balloon, that in this environment, there would be $800,000 given to the Board of Ed for new expenditures. So the way we would look at this is, based on the technicality, how this evolves, if this goes to the town, which it normally does, we could submit how we would align our line items and utilize those funds. If this came to us as a grant, we would move dollars and shift, but it would be off the bottom line. So just to designate, and that will happen at the end, when we're, we have the town budget, when we present, they'll figure out how that all works. But just to show you the value of it, it's significant. $800,000 would move the needle on that number of 3.9 I just presented, to 2.9, which is around the guidance. So either way, it's a a positive that's happening right now to both the town and to the Board of Ed. So I wanted to put that up there, because I think it kind of shows order of magnitude of when we started this process. We did not have that information, right? When we went to the tri-board, we now have that information. So that's part of the kind of dollars-found conversation, whether it's through reductions, or it's through revenues, or how we look at it. So I just wanted to put out that, put that out there to frame where we are. In addition to that, we have, not to go over now, but as questions come up, we've gathered kind of the supplementary information that people asked about. So we have a slide on the new staffing that we've added, that we can go over at the appropriate time if people want. But I'm gonna turn it back to you, Jeff, just, that was a quick revisit of where we were. And we talked about giving the board members opportunities to kind of speak their mind and give their thoughts about where we are. Reminding that the timeline, we have this meeting, we have the meeting on the 25th, which are only, we always keep it open, our only agenda item is the budget. So we could have time there for more discussion, but that's the timeline where we would wanna approve a Board of Education budget.
On the 25th?
On the 25th, yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you for kind of level-setting for us. That was a nice recap of a four-hour meeting on Saturday, in five minutes. And I like, if there's no objections, I like the suggestion Josh made, was quite literally just, it may just be easier to kind of just go around the table to ask your questions, see where you're at, than to kind of, everybody just kind of go after it, so.
That's so technical, I would say give your global opinions on where you are with the budget, and if there's specific questions on that, we can go back to that. I mean, that's in migration patterns.
Right.
Yeah.
But it was a thing that came up, so I thought maybe you would walk through it.
We can. I would do it. I mean, I think it makes more sense after you kind of see what comes up for people.
Josh, you wanna start us off?
Yeah, sure. I think points kind of align with where I was Saturday, so kind of just to kind of summarize, high level. My feeling is kind of that these budget numbers, right, I feel like I said it, right, special ed comes in as a fixed cost in my mind. Right? So fixed costs, I feel like we're at 4, 6, 5, I think is what the number came out to together. So feels like, all right, so how do you get from 4, 6, 5, if guidance is 2, 9? That seems, it's gonna be hard to get to 2, 9. So where can we do things, right? I've said before, right, our per pupil expenditure versus where we rank, again, to kind of summarize from Saturday, right, per pupil, we're right in the middle of our dirk. We're right in the middle of everything, mid, but our ratings are high. So I just kind of look at it from, when you think of what we're getting, the bang for our buck, I think we're doing well, right? Our ratings are up there with the Grenages, right? Our per pupil expenditure is right in here with our area around us in the middle. We're not outspending those around us, but our ratings are way up there. So I look at the number, and I say, all right, 4, 6, 5 is just fixed coming in. We wanna make that number lower. But in an effort to make that lower, I just wanna make sure whatever reductions we do is really for the benefit of the town, our students, our parents, our classes, staff, schools, teachers, the culture, all of it. Right? So could we get down to in the threes? I don't know, that seems tough to me when we're crunching all those numbers. I know I had said, and I'm sure Jen will say more on it, right, if we're having four retirements, do we want retirements, do we want to take those all, or do we want to replace? We talked about a kindergarten teacher, which we'll get into, there's the question of a central teacher, right, with those class sizes. I would just kind of want to just look very closely, I know we want to get that number as low as possible, but what's the impact that comes with those numbers? Like, we talked about, you cut things, you don't do things, you don't, it's hard to get them back down the road, because then everything looks like another add, a bigger number, right? So those are the things on my mind is, you know, the reductions we're making, like, really kind of what's the real impact of those? I know we're not going to talk CNR, I feel like that's a big one for me, right, as far as that capital, right? Like, is there, we're, we're running off, I said, an allowance that we got like twenty years ago, right? And if that number were to go up, if there's a step-up plan to get that up, that allows us more flexibility without increasing our budget necessarily, and there's a lot that needs to be done with that money, that capital non-recurring. So those are kind of my big items there is.
Can I jump in on, on just one thing on the tail end of the CNR?
Yes.
So I did have a conversation with Lisa Havner at, at the meeting about the CNR, she would like us to provide, we had it, you know, it was, we had what we would do with the five fifty, and then we had what we would do with the million, a prioritized list of those items outside of the five fifty we could fund in the operating for discussion when we move forward out of reserves to try to get some of those things done next year in a different way. I understand, I understand totally what you're saying, but not off the table in its entirety and hopefully at least getting some things done, so.
So would that be, that feels like that would be similar to like the bus last year, where we don't get our CNR up, but we get stuff taken care of somewhere else, right?
And it had a huge impact for us.
Sure. Absolutely, I, and that's, that's better than not getting the CNR raised, but at some point, right, it would be, how do we work a CNR raise?
Yeah, oh, hundred percent, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, those are, those are my main things, just ask, you know, your office and the fellow board, right, while we're trying to get the number as low as possible, for every effort we make, just think long-term, is it the right move? That would be my ask, because I know we all want the number lower, but there's an impact of that.
I had one piece on that, too, I just want to go back and frame, and we had, you know, just in this forum, we had a good conversation on it Saturday. While we haven't allocated new staffing in this, I just want to say, our strategy as an administration was to priority, prioritize some of the operational stuff that we haven't done in a time, particularly maintenance and equipment, and really try to get those dollars back up there. So I just want to make, you know, because we're not looking at line items, so to speak, tonight, that, you know, we're talking about reductions, yes, on the retirement side, but we had, you know, some significant dollar adds on the operations side, too.
Yep, those are my main points.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I kind of set my piece on Saturday, but, you know, gathering my thoughts a little here, I think, I, I like what you said, Matt, where you said it's kind of a, a maintenance budget here, or I think that, what you called it, and I kind of agree. I guess, you know, what I appreciate is our wanting to be creative, like, to, to rein in costs, like, try to make, make investments now that could help us down the road, right? Rather than kicking the can down the road, year after year after year, what can we do now that could save us money? Or whether it's bringing, you know, people that go to other towns for education in, back, back to town, that type of thing, or, you know, building a new school like Latimer Lane, you know, I mean, that will eventually pay off, right? So I'm good with everything. I think, you know, none of us, like you said, none of us want to sign off on a high number, but I trust you and Neil and Sue, and you guys are phenomenal, in my opinion. So I know, I appreciate everything you brought forward, and I think it's a very, very well-thought plan, and I'm good right now, yeah. Jeff?
So, you know, I have an appreciation of the information continuing to change.
Yeah.
I think that, that continues to factor into my decision, you know, prayer's worked, so hopefully those dollars will come in and we'll get closer to the two-nine. You know, I, we had some ending discussion, and I did look through things, I think, I would like us to continue to look at the shared service model that we started some years ago, I think it's done well to help us.
Yeah.
I think, I, I looked through the supplemental, and I know there's a long list, and I was trying to just get a grasp of the new things versus what's to come, but I talked the other day about that. I'd like us to continue to work on that, because I think there's an opportunity there. But where we are today, I, I feel pretty good. I think our meeting in two weeks will truly be the tell. I think, the other thing I'm going to say is, you know, we put some things in place last year to try to get here sooner, and I think we're about the same place with adding finance and everything. So I, I think I'm okay. You know, we don't vote until two weeks from now, but I think I'm, I think I'm okay. There's still some things I'm looking at, but, but I think I'm okay where I am today.
Okay.
Jeff?
So I, I said, anybody that wants to watch the four hours, I think I said everything I needed to say on Saturday, but I will say, just to reiterate here, that I do think long-term, or sort of long-term being the next like five years or so, we still need to make a really hard look at the potential of maybe a redistrict. In some ways, I think the central Latimer lines have been confused, I think Squadron could use some relief in class sizes, and Terrifil could benefit from some additional students coming over. So I know that's a scary word, I do think it's something that we should consider, so we're fully utilizing all of our buildings to the best of their capacity.
That's a great point, yeah.
Yeah, and then I get to go, my ass is chairman's prerogative. No, I, I, this will be a theme, it'll be no different than, than what I said on Saturday, four-three gives me a little heartburn, more than a little, to be honest with you. I'm more comfortable with the three-nine, and it, it, as kind of Sharon says, as this information evolves over the next couple of weeks, I, right, the, the, the question here, right, is that, what, can we apply that eight fifty, and, and does that get you to two-nine, and then we can all go home very happy and sleep well?
Big point being, eight fifty's going to help you either way.
Right, sure, sure, sure.
It's just a matter of, just trying to demonstrate, you know, to your point, demonstrate the, the value of, we've, I thought, you know, Josh framed it out last year and again this year, this isn't like when we present our budgets, we have a significant outlier expenditure issue. We can line up our data points in a lot of different ways. Like, I just looked, we've had a lot of conversation publicly over the last two years about tuition costs, outplacement costs, and special education costs. So we've now lined up those costs for data to share with the Board of Finance, and in our DIRG, percentage spent of your operating budget on those services, we're right in the middle, just like we are in these, in these other pieces. So that's why the revenue side of this becomes so important, and that's why, you know, you've all, you've all said it, this continues to change and continues to evolve, and we got to keep the open minds on that to see, as we kind of say, what levers get pulled on at the end of the day. We also have healthy reserve levels, both in our Insurance Internal Service Fund, which kind, is kind of our wheelhouse, and the town and their general fund and the Capital Reserve Fund. So I think everybody's been open to trying to solve the, the tax challenge for the year, and I just appreciate, nobody on this board is jumping too quick to go to deep programmatic reductions to try to get there.
Yeah, what I would say is, I, I don't look at this in a vacuum, like, I kind of evaluate this with Two Farms Village, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's, talk about innovative and creative solutions, that will help us with this exercise.
Right.
So it's, it's, it's all kind of a piece to me, that's why I really want to drive this number down as low as we can, without, obviously, without significant, significant impacts to the, to the students, so appreciate all the work. I would say again, and I said this on Saturday, we, we have a hundred thousand dollars in the reserves, or the, the health insurance reserve line to take, boy, even if you bump that to one twenty-five, one fifty, that doesn't seem that old big a significant issue in that fund, and it will actually, I think, make, make a bigger difference.
To the operating, yeah. Couple things, because I want to make sure we followed up on what board members requested. So Brian, you had a, a conversation just about tuition, outplacement over time, kind of, of a, a five, six-year window, so we put that together. You know, it's pretty significant, you know, that budget number that we've talked about of increase in tuition of about ten percent a year, it has increased about exactly ten point three percent a year for, for about six years, to the tune of about one point five million. So it's a, it's a considerable expenditure, we know we budget net of excess costs, so that's the gross dollar, so it, it, that's not the impact of the operating, but.
So seven years ago, it was like half that number.
Right.
So.
About two point five, and now it's five.
Wow, yeah.
Gross.
Gross, correct, because we're.
Right, and it's about it, you're, you're reimbursed for about half of it.
Yeah, and so to, to Jeff's point, right, I mean, if, the only thing we know about the future is that it's going to be different, right? You can't predict it, but if the past is any indication, you can assume at a minimum ten percent year after year moving forward, so that's a.
Which is why that, that, that program concept is so important, I mean, the governor was on the radio again today, touting his grant initiatives and potential opportunities for districts to reap the benefits for getting out in front of this and trying to be creative, so we'll be all over those opportunities when they come, and hopefully we can time that up. But I know we have the public hearing on the seventeenth?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, okay. Where the public will have an opportunity to come out, and Katie and.
Five forty-five.
Five forty-five, yeah, we'll, we'll present again, and I'll certainly, I'll certainly be there, so. So that was one piece of the data. I'd like to just pop up the, Sue, the next slide. We just, you know, while we certainly know that we've talked about, you know, for lack of a better term, maintenance budget this year on the staffing, we haven't seen enrollment increases, it's just a reminder to the board, they've been incredibly supportive over the last few years with new staffing dollars and how we've allocated them. So we just wanted to organize that in a way for you to, for you to see, you'll remember last year, we had the large bump in the ILM population, and we addressed that. Fortunately, we haven't seen that growth curve continue, so we've been able to make some programmatic improvements there and continue our work. But, you know, twenty-five positions over the course of a few years. We've had some offsets, so we've minimized the total FTE increase to that, but you can see where those resources are going, and they're certainly having a positive impact. I've had Sue start to query, and I don't have it to share here today, you know, when we talk about that return on investment, where we rank and how we look, we also want to start looking at some key special education data points and achievement, to see how those students are growing over time, and we're starting to see some, you know, plus five percent increases in cohort growth across the last couple of years that we'll bring forward and show the board as well. So I think that'll be important as we move forward and continue to talk about these dollars, how we allocate and how we measure our success, so.
Just, just to clarify, so I have, so that's a gross number.
That's a gross number, yeah.
What do you think, doesn't that, I just think that's important for folks to, to understand.
Certified staff in those four years, you're up fourteen positions.
Okay, so fourteen, okay, great.
Thank you. And Neil had a wonderfully fun time.
Yes, so.
Talking about his data slide, which we need to talk.
Yes, so.
Neil, what's it?
At the work.
Sorry, the fourteen, that number, because you said fourteen, the net, right, so that's gross less retirements, I assume.
Right.
The one thing I would say, because the fourteen stands, I was kind of looking at it here, we've added gross twenty-five, almost half of that was in special ed, right, we're talking about the growing costs of special ed, so I'm just thinking, right, like, almost half of that special, and I, I'm, I'm pretty sure, I'm guessing, the net, there probably was, special ed's not getting much on the minus for the net, right?
Correct, correct.
I would say, right, so it's, on this slide here, it looks like eleven, twelve are special ed out of the twenty-five, and then the net's fourteen, so if we're net fourteen, you're, outside of your special ed program, we talk about the growing costs, growing staff, as a school system, outside of that, we've netted a plus maybe two throughout our school system.
The last, the last hit that was kind of enrollment-related on the regular ed side, you can see that was twenty-one, twenty-two, when we, we were seeing that growth, Josh in the special ed enrollment. So I'll take it back to my comments on kind of holding steady on staff right now. Because I do not feel we have places where we can go to reallocate like we have in the past, because you, you're, you're going to start hitting at the core. You know, you're going to start pulling out, you know, something from a, one school, and having another something from another school, and how we support our teachers with coaches and our, it just, struggle with that concept a little bit, we're, we're close, we're close there.
Yeah, and I would say that adds into the, when we talk about like that five-year average, I think it was like two something, three percent increase in budget.
Yeah.
So you say our five-year average is on average three percent, and our four, five-year average staff is plus fourteen, a big chunk of that staff has been to the special ed, the growing need, and that three percent over five years, big growth, you just gave the numbers on how much special ed's growing. So, right, so that's why I keep saying, when we're balancing this budget, right, the game's changing a little bit, right? And so I just always want to be mindful of exactly what you're saying is, through the years, what you've been doing, again, teams have been doing a great job, the boards have been doing a great job of trying to keep these numbers as low as an increase as possible without hitting bone, right? But we're kind of like, like you're saying, we're there now, that even if we want to get strategic with some of the stuff we talked about Saturday, where does it come from? Because we've kind of gotten to that point where anything now is going to be really tough, so maybe it's not this year, maybe it's a maintenance budget and stuff, but there's going to come a point where we're going to have to have some tough discussions, and hopefully every year, we're not like so tight with it, but.
Yeah, absolutely understood.
We ready to go on this one?
Absolutely.
All right, so at the board, at the workshop, some questions came about elementary staffing and looking at enrollment patterns over time as opposed to a snitcher. So we all left here at one o'clock, I did take a few hours off, but I grabbed my historical enroll, sat down with three of my favorite things, a historical enrollment book, a PGA Tour telecast, and a cold beverage, and I went to work.
Don't forget your new purple palette.
So, yeah, my new purple palette, so, and started to chart out over time, what happens to a kindergarten cohort as it goes through each of the schools? Started, the questions were mostly around Terrifil School to start, and so I just want to orient you to the chart, that if you, the, it's hard to surprise me with these numbers, and yet they did surprise me in some ways. If you had asked me the first column, what would be the average size of a kindergarten, I would have gotten those numbers almost exactly. You know, high forties at Central School, high fifties at Latimer Lane, high seventies at Squadron Line, about thirty-five at Terrifil, and forty-five at Tooten Hills. Average over twelve years, I'll tell you, I picked two thousand and thirteen as the point to start this, because full-day kindergarten started the year before that. If you look at the data before two thousand and twelve, it's really skewed, because people would not, would more often hold kids out of kindergarten and then enter them in first grade. So it, it looked really different. Plus, historically, from two thousand and four to two thousand and nine, Terrifil's kindergarteners went to Central School, and from two thousand and eight to two thousand and ten, Latimer's kindergarteners went to Tooten Hills. So you can't even look at those grades, so it's a good timeframe to take. What surprised me is not what the average was, but just how wide the range at each of the schools over that time. So that while, take the first one alphabetically, Central School may average forty-eight, but at its smallest in that twelve-year span, there were only thirty-five kindergarteners in one cohort, and there were as many as fifty-six kindergarteners in another. And you could see that every school has a very wide range, and we ride these ups and downs at the schools, to the point where, you know, Squadron Line is as big as a thirty-five student difference, sixty-four kids, which means at one point, we only ran three kindergartens at Squadron Line, and a few years ago, we had as many as ninety-nine. Terrifil, which was the discussion point on Saturday, is at its smallest right now at twenty-one, it has been as large as forty-two. If you go back all the way. If you go back all the way to 2000, it was never a point where this is the only time Terrifield has dropped to one class of the grade. So I can prove that. There are a few years where at the younger grades, K through two, that you actually had enough kids that there were three classes at Terrifield. And that's a little bit of why the Terrifield kindergarteners were going to Central School. And so I could, I could show that. What the other chart, other elements of the chart then show you is what happens with that kindergarten when it moves to grade one? How, how much does it grow or decrease on average? And then it does the same thing to say, okay, three years later by grade three and six years later by grade six. How, what do we say, and that's why it's, the chart is labeled in migration, what's the in-migration pattern over the course of time? And you could see that it's a wide range again. It's very unpredictable in some ways of whether a group will increase rapidly or very slowly or even in the first grade, instance go down a few kids. And every school has had its moments. But what this data proves over time is that yes, it increases, but it increases inconsistently across the five schools. Like you can't, there, there are years where all of a sudden 12 first graders move into first grade at Central School, but Latimer goes down three students. Like it, there's, there's no rhyme or reason to it in terms of, so you can get historical averages, but you just kind of have to ride the wave of, of how this stuff plays out. And, and it's why we follow this on a week-to-week pattern throughout the spring and summer. I was surprised that if you add up all those averages by grade six, you add about 60 students to a kindergarten cohort by the time it reaches grade six. So it, it, and it sort of makes, like a kindergarten cohort starts at 250 to 60 often and by the time it hits the middle school, it's 310, you know, and that is as, as where that falls. And I was really stunned that even a small school like Central adds 15 kids over the course of six, of six grades, so that, and that Squadron Line is as many as 22 kids, which is like five kids per classroom by the time it reaches sixth grade. So it was a labor of love. I enjoyed doing this. And I, but I got a, like in terms of it offering a predictability, I don't think it does. I think what it tells you is that these things are, happen within a wide range. And this is actually, it's, but when you base it on averages, this is what demographers are actually doing when they make projections. They're taking these kind of averages, turning those into percentages and then making multiplying factors. So I may take this to the next step and make my own chart to, because I, I mean, it's now easy to do, now that I have what the numbers are that I've actually now created with the multiplying factor is that we are giving, we are asking other people to do for us. So thank you.
So maybe we'll have a new chart. Maybe we'll have a new chart in October one?
This may show up again.
Oh my God, I'm so excited.
And, you know, again, what I, I would say coming out of this is I think we're doing the right thing, because we make post-budget decisions on these things all the time. Like there's not a year that goes by where we don't see something shift. Last year, it just happened to be, wow, Squadron's kindergarten went up expectantly and Terrifield's didn't. So that was the decision we made. We're going to shift the kindergarten from Terrifield to Squadron. Didn't add any money to the budget, but we made a shift. And that's kind of what we've been doing over time.
Questions? Other than a real concern with how Neil likes to spend his Saturday afternoon? Regardless of the Phoenix Open being on.
Yeah, it was.
Anybody?
No, I would just add again, just to, just to nail it home and be very clear that I'm being clear, that I, for Jennifer, speaking only for myself, I believe a definition of a school is to have at least two of everything. And so I would hope that this board or this administration can make a plan, if not this year, to get Terrifield back to two of everything, just because I just think it's a hard situation to be in with only one, for the kids and the teachers and so on and so forth.
Yeah, and I'd back that up, right? I think you know where I stand, right? That numbers tell story and you follow the numbers the majority of the time. But then being a board or anybody, you're also asked to be strategic, thoughtful, think outside the numbers sometimes. And if you find yourself in a place where you do have one group of kids going through a program that's never happened before, and have essentially been pushed into a pilot-ish program, and they're just unlike any other class in any other school in town, they just, they are just going year to year by themselves essentially, that's where I say we have to take a step back and say, the numbers absolutely tell us one thing. But strategic beyond the numbers, is it what's best for that school, those students, those groups? And is there anything we can do? Is there a way to see if there's others that say, do you want to be where there's many more students? Would you like to take advantage of an opportunity to potentially go to Terrifield where it is smaller numbers in a different atmosphere? And you ask people if they want to do that and you may have two things, people that want to go there and that school gets their second class back. And again, I'm with you, Jen, right? If it's not this year, I'd really like to see it for next year. I just don't want to see that group having to go through their whole career in elementary school, just kind of on a solo mission, so to speak. So again, I think with all the students you have at Squadron or somewhere else, right? Would you find a few families or more that want to take advantage of that opportunity? I feel like it's at least worth the question. I don't know the best timing for that. I defer to the experts, but I do feel like it's something we should look into beyond just the numbers in this case, because it's never happened before, as Neil confirmed.
The other thing I think that I would add is, you know, we do, we do enough surveys, I think there's an opportunity to add, and I would say the same. You know, my, the other concern is that we get real comfortable with there being one and eventually somebody looks and says, well, we've been doing one for a while, do we just move it all together? So that's my concern.
Well, I would just say that I think everybody recognizes that one is not ideal, right? I mean, we all recognize that. Obviously, we've got some financial constraints that we're trying to deal with this year and I could just speak for myself, for what it's worth, you know? You know, I, I commit, you know, that we continue to look at this, you know? I, I think it's part of a larger conversation about the districting and about, it's, it's a, it's a much bigger conversation than, than just this class. But, you know, I, I think it is absolutely, I support, you know, continued conversations and looking, looking forward.
And I think we're all on the same page, that like, you know, the redistrict or tinkering, however you want to do it, we definitely are at a stage where we're going to have to fully utilize all spaces at all schools to the best, you know, by keeping our neighborhood schools intact.
Very good. Anything else? Anything else more in the, just budget in general?
No, it's great, thank you guys.
I guess I still have a question for Jeff, maybe Sue. I've heard a couple of times mentioned, besides the eight fifty, right? Like as things start to solidify or whatever, the next two weeks, what's really going to potentially be different two weeks from now, when we're all together voting, right? We're all, right?
Fair. I, I think, I mean, for me, it would, is there any more clarification on whether the Board of Finance wants to look at that eight fifty as a grant offset or whether they want to continue as a revenue? That to me is really the main piece, because that would, it'd be the same budget, but it would change the number. You know what I mean? The use of reserves at the town level and the internal service fund level, that will come after we present to the Board of Finance. They have the town's budget and they're looking at this in totality. So we won't really have any, I don't think we'll have any further information on that, Josh, publicly anyhow, until we get to that point where we present our budget to them.
So something like that, when you say reserves, I know I bring up the CNR thing, right? Because I feel like it's always like too late for this year, but maybe next year, right? Like when do we need to get, like if it is a step up or it is an increase, when do those conversations have to happen to when we're looking at our line item budget next year, it's a different number potentially?
You, I would put it in my proposal. So when I present the budget, I would have in there, rather than on the side, it's kind of the wish list, so to speak, that five fifty would be a million two and you'd see the, would be gross that way, but you'd see the buyback be increased, I think by 120 or 150 or whatever it would be.
Right, so we as a.
But at the, at the tri-board, it was not there, because at the tri-board, it was clarified, do not do that.
Right, so as a board, we, oh, go ahead, Jeff, because you.
No, I was just, I was just going to say, and I don't remember if I said this on Saturday or not, but I think you're more, to your global question, I think it's a perfect issue to take up in our finance community, once we get, once we get past this.
Yeah.
And I say that for a few years, right? That's, that's a place where we can kind of work through it, figure out what that number is, what it's not. But also Lisa has, has said very appropriately that she doesn't want to have kind of these conversations in the middle of the budget cycle, so it's more appropriate to have the conversations with our Board of Finance, you know, friends where this really will sit, kind of in that, I don't want to say off-season, but you know what I mean, kind of off-budget.
Yeah, no, and I thought too, and I completely agree, not pushing it, but it kind of right, like it's kind of feels like, it was like last year was a, we should probably look at that and then it was kind of pushed aside and we got a bust and that was great. And then this year it came up again, but it's going to be a tight year, so probably not, like it may never be a great time for it, but if we start the discussion in, you know, May, June for next year, I'd like to see us move that needle.
Anything else?
A quick quarterly, I mean, Amy not feeling well, so she couldn't join us tonight. The two things, she talked about both these pieces at the workshop, but wanted to reiterate, when we look at the revenues this year, the two kind of challenges that we've seen are about a hundred thousand dollars less on the open choice grant due to attendance and then the varied percentage of reimbursement on the excess cost, which is about $400,000. The other variable cost to keep an eye on in utilities has been electricity. We do have the non-lapsing fund intact that will, as, you know, we go through and we look for areas of savings and update the board, we're in, we're in good position to cover that deficit in the, in the current year and the Board of Finance has had some conversation about holding us harmless on that 411 moving forward, so we'll have to see how that plays. But that's it. Other than that, we're in.
Good shape.
Yep, great.
Questions, anybody? Leave this to her next.
Jeff, for when we meet on Tuesday, the possible reductions on that like slide that took from four three to three nine, is three nine what we're going to probably see on Tuesday then? Is that what we're agreeing to here?
Let me kind of ask you a question maybe a little slightly differently. So for that, will you kind of run through sort of a similar presentation then?
Next week?
Yeah, those 25th.
I can do that, yeah.
I guess really to that question, just to see if we, just so we know, like what the eight fifty really is, just kind of, just to kind of finalize what that really looks like.
Yeah, because I guess do we, I guess I'm asking the board here, do we need him to do that or do we, are we, is the three nine, like the bus, right, was on one slide, not the other? Do you need to talk to someone about the bus or those other, there were like five things?
No.
Like, does anything have to happen over the next two weeks to know where we land on that?
I mean, I will have a conversation about those things, just to reiterate, hey, those are reserve level things, try to get a notion that it'll be supported before we.
Yeah, that's where I was getting.
Yeah, yeah.
Public audience.
Hi, Diana Gansley, 78 County Road. The only thing I want to say is that we, of course, I hear a lot of public audience about tax increases. So I am going to welcome you all to our next meeting for those of you who would like to sit in when we are discussing our budget. We've had a lot of budget discussions since the 24th at six, actually, we're starting at five o'clock, because it's going to be a long discussion and hopefully we may postpone our vote if we don't get it all. But you'll see our process as well and where we're having these discussions and trying to avoid fiscal blessings several years and looking at out years, but understanding that whatever we do, that we also recognize the word of budget is not a percentage than ours is. I'm also going to kindly, what should I say? How can I put this tactfully? It's not towards you, but I'm going to recommend that perhaps you watch our public audience from yesterday's meeting. Some interesting things were discussed and that's all I'm going to say about that. So you may want to just watch the beginning of, of our public audience that happened at our, our, our meeting last night. But I applaud you and thank you for all the hard work you're doing. We, I, you know, sitting here agree with a lot of you and we know on the town side how, how hard this is, it's a tough year, but also having off-cycle conversations about budgets, you know, so that, because we're all in different shifts, but same waters at this point, so that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I think I know what you're talking about. Well, what I would say, if, if, let's just, if we're talking about greater state involvement in the special ed funding, I don't think anybody would disagree, but that's just not the reality we sit here today, so. But thanks, we should, it's, it's, anyways, next. Our next meeting, as we've said, is the, the 25th, right here. With that. Motion to adjourn.
Motion that we adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right, thank you everybody.
For over 40 years, SCM has been the voice of our town.
Bringing us together through local programming.
Education.
And live broadcasts.
SCM isn't just about television.
It's about empowering our community.
Ensuring our voices are heard during government meetings.
And celebrating milestones.
Like our high school graduations.
But today, SCM faces a challenge.
Our funding structure is based on television subscriptions.
It's no secret, people have been cutting the cord.
With a shift to internet-only subscriptions.
SCM receives less revenue.
Even though all our programming is freely available online.
We need your support.
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 Your donation can make a difference.
It will ensure that SCM remains open.
Continues to educate our youth.
And keeps our community informed.
Thanks to SCM, I've been honing my creative skills, helping me work towards my college degree.
SCM is crucial for keeping our community connected.
SCM isn't just here to broadcast local events, they're actually preserving Simsbury's history.
Join us.
Join us in preserving Simsbury's voice.
Simsbury's voice.
Together we can ensure that SCM continues to thrive.
For generations to come.
Visit our website.
Or scan the QR code on your screen to make your donation.
Every contribution counts.
Thank you for supporting Simsbury Community Media.
Where your town.
Your schools.
And your government.
Come together.